We really, really done Eastern and Western Caribbean. We were supposed to do Mediterranean this coming.
We did Western Mediterranean.
About three or four of them.
I'm going to do Alaska.
That would be really nice. The nice thing about Alaska.
I can say whatever I feel like.
One is that the waterways are so naturally.
That's it.
It's very close to the land.
Yeah.
Extremely close, so you see everything. And the other thing is that the towns are all.
Oh, yeah.
So it's the lights down on the water.
So it's like going through the fjords.
And so because it's deep, you duck and you get off. You don't have to take a bus.
See, that's my issue about anytime you're in the Caribbean. It's a forty-five-minute drive to get to where you're going, or an hour, or another boat ride.
Great.
You're right, yeah.
That's super. Okay?
We really want to do Alaska. We held off on Alaska.
You want?
Because the other stuff. We want to be able to pay gracious fees and do all these other things. So I want to ask, how's Casey getting in there?
Doing okay, although last week we ended up at the hospital with a tweaked back. So, but it's okay. I was not an overnight stay, so more good than bad, more good than bad. Probably pushed you far. I'll type more later. No, she didn't want him because she's so sick of him from last year. It was a year ago this month. I know, we've been through this. I guess I am, I guess I am, so. Hey, everybody ready? I'm gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order here. Good evening, I'm Thomas O'Brien. This is the Planning Commission, November tenth, twenty twenty, shortly after six P M. Looks like we've got enough for a quorum here, but we have some notable absences. So why don't we go ahead and do the roll call, starting with my right, please?
Rob Price.
Erica Harris.
Ed Wagner.
Jared Abram.
And I'm Thomas O'Brien, and I'm gonna do my best to keep this thing moving smoothly here. Next item on the agenda is review and potential approval of the minutes. Do we have any motions on that?
Motion to approve the minutes as written.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Excellent, we've got a motion in a second. I also will note that Bob Dallas is now walking up to the dais. Mr. Dallas, we are voting on approval of the minutes. There's been a motion in a second. All in favor of passing that motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed, like sign, and motion passes. And with that, I'm going to hand the meeting, Mr. Dallas, over to you, for your pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, I appreciate that. Sorry for being late, everybody. I got to hit every light, so that's, you know, an opportunity that I don't recommend for anybody. Well, so we're at item D, I see. So the organizational procedural items, do we have any? Take it now. Any unfinished business for item E? Nope, all right. We do then have a significant amount of new business items. And the first one to call up is RZ twenty dash zero four. And that's a rezoning from the current OCR conditional to district PC two. So with that, I believe there'll be a staff presentation.
Yes, one second, I'm trying to get it pulled up for you.
Okay. Video.
All right, thank you Chairman and Planning Commission. Today here we have before you RZ twenty dash oh four and SLOP twenty dash oh one. And this is at three oh one and three oh three perimeter center north. This is approximately four point one five acres. And if you look to the north and to the east, there are apartment complexes on both sides. To the south, you will see there is electrical substation for Georgia Power. And to the west, you have the Sterling Point Shopping Center with a hotel, retail, and restaurants there. Coming down to the site, you will see to your left is three oh one perimeter center north. And that is a hundred and sixty-two thousand square foot office building. And then to the right there, you have three oh three perimeter center north, which is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand square foot office building. And then there on the farther south side, you have a seven-story parking garage that you're allowed to park for both of those buildings there. All right, and the request, they're trying to rezone from OCR conditional, which is Office Commercial Residential, to PC two. The PC two zoning district is recommended by the zoning ordinance, as you can see here on the future zoning map. And then as well in the comprehensive plan, which does recommend perimeter center zoning districts to be used in this area. And the special land use permit is to allow for a secondary educational facility to go into these two buildings. So that use can be facilitated along with other uses that were allowed in the office space. And here on this proposal, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request from OCR C to PC two. And then the staff is also recommending approval of the conditions of the special land use permit to allow a secondary educational use with one condition. The secondary educational use shall be limited to fifty thousand square feet per building. And this will require two votes from the board. And now I turn it over to the chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ash, I appreciate that. All right, so as we always do, we have ten minutes in favor and ten minutes in opposition. And we'll go ahead and combine the time for the two, but we'll take two separate votes, if that's okay with the commissioners? I don't know that we'll have that much comment one way or the other. So is there anybody speaking in favor of this application?
Yes, Commissioner, this is Henry Bailey, counsel for the applicant. I think Richard did a wonderful job of presenting what our request is today. I think he very accurately summarized what we're looking for. Again, the applicant is Perimeter Sterling Properties, L L P. The applicant representative, other than myself, Gil Hearn, is also on the line. I think he's listed as an attendee. I'm not sure if he's able to speak or chime in with attendee status, but he is here as well. And I think the only, the only change that we would, that we would ask on this, and Richard and I talked about this earlier today, is the condition with respect to fifty thousand square feet per building. We would just ask that the, that the fifty thousand square feet per building be combined to a hundred thousand square feet overall to be used between the two buildings. In other words, if one building needs seventy-five thousand square feet of these post-secondary use, then that building can use it. And the other building would be only, be limited only to twenty-five thousand square feet.
Okay. Is there anyone else speaking in favor? Or do you have anything else, Mr. Bailey?
No, that's it. We just, again, appreciate Richard's presentation. Again, he accurately summed it up and we just.
He always does well.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else speaking in favor on the Zoom call? All right, hearing none, is there anyone speaking in opposition to this application? All right, seen and hearing none? I'll turn it over to the planning commissioners to ask if they have any questions of staff or the applicant with respect to this. And if I'll just begin with one obvious question, what is the institution that's considering this? For teaching?
I will rely on the applicant for that. That may be a privilege they have between them and their client, but staff does not know.
Okay, if you're at liberty to say, if not, then I understand.
No, I think, Gil, did you want to chime in on that? No, I don't think we're at liberty to discuss, to discuss it at the moment.
Well, we look forward to being educated about the education.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Are there any staff, Planning Commissioner, questions of the applicant? Commissioner Price?
Yeah, I have a question for staff, just in relation to Mr. Bailey's request for the hundred thousand for both buildings versus fifty thousand for each. Do you have an issue with that change, or what are your thoughts on that, please?
Yes, I did discuss this with Mr. Bailey earlier today, and staff did not have any issue with that. Because regardless if it's one building or the other, it's still only twenty-eight percent of the use of between the two buildings. So it's still under thirty percent, and we think that's a reasonable accommodation for this time. If they want to exceed that, they would have to come back before this board and city council to get that approved for any further use.
All right, thank you. That's, that's the only question I have. Commissioner Harris?
Mr. Brian? Is the limitation to fifty thousand by two or one hundred thousand by one, is that relating to capacity for ingress and egress? Or why, why are we, why are we limiting at all? What's, what's the significance of that?
We're trying to limit it because it will have a different hour of operation than most other office uses in there. The application, applicant did stress that a lot of the students coming to this facility will be from six to ten P M. in the evening, whereas the administrative staff will be nine to six. So this is kind of a way for us to alleviate traffic issues and people coming in and out. So yes, like the ingress and egress, because as we all know, the perimeter center area is very high traffic, especially around seven to eight A M. and five to six P M. So it's kind of a way to make this use, limit the use there or traffic flow, and just to make sure there's enough parking in the parking deck and stuff like that.
Okay, understood, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Wagner?
No questions.
Commissioner Abram?
I don't think you have any questions either.
All right, well, at this juncture then, I don't have any more questions if there's a motion amongst the commissioners, having heard what the applicant asked for in the staff recommendation.
Look, clarify before we do this, we have to, we're approving each item independently.
We would, so basically we'll call out the first one, which is item number one, RZ twenty dash zero four. And then I'll call out the second one, which is SLOP twenty dash zero one. And for clarity purposes from the staff, if this planning commission was to accede to the request of the applicant to go with a hundred square, hundred thousand square feet for both buildings, would that be on number one or number two?
We would need to, the motion, we need to approve the rezoning first, because this is not an allowed use under their current zoning district. So once you approve the rezoning, then you can go with the approval of the special land use permit.
And that's where the fifteen hundred thousand discussion would come up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so hopefully I clarifies it for whomever wants to make a motion.
So I will move that we approve RZ twenty dash four.
With the app, is the motion include the hundred thousand square foot?
The clarification was.
Okay, I tried, I tried, yes, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, you second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is the motion second, is there any further discussion? Of, in favor of the motion, signify or raise your hand? Unanimous? Okay, is there a motion on SLOP twenty dash zero one?
I will move that we approve SLOP twenty dash zero one with the modification that secondary educational uses be limited to one hundred thousand square feet between the two buildings of the project.
All right, is there a second on that?
Second.
All right, there's a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, signify or raise your hand? It's unanimous. All right, thank you very much, and good luck with that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on those two? Okay, so I guess we'll go ahead and call the item number three, which Mr. Olson, as I understand, according to my notes, is going to present to us, and that's RZ twenty dash zero three.
Can everybody hear me okay from up here?
Yes.
Perfect. So the way I'm gonna do this is, this is the rezoning case, RZ dash zero three, but there's also five slops that are really married with this case. So I'm gonna go through the presentation and include the slops within the presentation. And then you can go back and vote on each, each and every one of those individually. So I'm gonna bring, bring up my presentation here, sorry about that.
As you pull it up, when people speak to this, if there's anything to change, let us know which one of the SLOP or five other items that change should, should occur if it's warranted.
Chairman, I'm having trouble hearing you.
You having trouble hearing me?
Yeah.
Is that better?
Okay, I can, I can hear you now.
Okay, great.
Okay, thanks. So, so the subject site is approximately two point eight six acres of property. It consists of three lots, eighty-four perimeter, which is on the southeast corner of Ashford Dunwoody Road and perimeter center east. There's also two rear lots at one thirty and one forty perimeter center east. The general area is a commercial, a major commercial and office area. The Ravinia complex is found to the south. There's an apartment complex to the east. The perimeter center mall across Ashford Dunwoody Road is to the west. And then there's a gas station to the north and several restaurants and retail shops further north there. This is just kind of a bird's eye view of the site. It is a vacant bank building. And if you recall, the site was last zoned approximately a year ago to the site plan that you see there on the screen. Under the conditions of zoning, this plan approved a eleven-story hotel with a hundred and sixty rooms and two additional multi-story buildings containing approximately forty-three thousand square feet of commercial uses, which include restaurants and retail. As well, there's several patio and rooftop terraces, seating, and a multi-story parking deck that you see there. This is the updated plan, and generally, due to the economic changes that have occurred really in the last six months, it's really changed the market for hotels. So the hotel has been removed from the site plan. And what you see in this place is a multifamily building. This is proposed as a senior living or age-restricted building with two hundred and twenty-five units. But the, the, the general plan that you saw last year hasn't changed much. The parking deck still remains in the same location. The surface parking hasn't changed. And the general square footage of the commercial, that has generally remained the same as well. The streetscapes are still being proposed with the, with the sidewalks and the patios as they were before, as well. The road that creates that connectivity between perimeter center east and Ravinia, that has remained in this plan as well. So when we look at the zoning as a PC two, it does comply with our zoning ordinance as well as our comprehensive plan. You can see that there it is identified as a PC two district. So this is the open space plan that's shown with this proposal. There's going to be approximately fifteen percent of the site will be pervious, which leaves approximately eighty-five percent of the site as lot coverage. I'll get into this, but this is actually one of the SLOP requests that they're proposing. But overall, the building area covers approximately forty-nine point four two percent of the site. The streetscapes that are proposed are very similar to what was proposed or approved back in twenty nineteen. Along Ashford Dunwoody Road, it incorporates an eight-foot street buffer, an eight-foot sidewalk, and a sixteen-foot or sixteen feet of extra sidewalk and patio area. And on perimeter center east, the frontage incorporates a six-foot sidewalk, six-foot street buffer, and seven to ten feet of extra sidewalk. So under the rezoning findings here, we believe that the PC two complies with our zoning ordinance and the comp plan. As I pointed out in that regulating map, the use itself is consistent with the vision of the comp plan, which as a policy calls it, calls out that area for mixed, as a mixed-use livable center with a mix of residential and retail uses. Also, in light of the surrounding districts, we feel that this proposal aligns with the mix of multifamily retail and restaurant uses in the area. So with that, we are recommending approval with the twenty conditions listed in the staff report. So that is the rezoning request. Again, I'm gonna go through the slops because they're, they're married with the rezoning request. So there, there are five slops proposed. SLOP twenty dash oh two A is a request to increase the impervious coverage from sixty-five percent or seventy-five percent with semi-pervious to a total of eighty-five percent. One thing that's important to note is that the original plan that you approved last year, its impervious was allowed to go up to eighty-six percent. This was part of a variance that was approved in two thousand and eight. So that was carried over with that site plan. But because there's only net to a PC two, that variance doesn't apply anymore. And under the new zoning, they have to apply for a special land use permit for the lot coverage. So, so basically, their request is slightly less than what was proposed originally. SLOP twenty dash oh two B, this is a SLOP to request an age-restricted multifamily housing unit. It's just a, a specific use that requires a SLOP. And we do feel that, that this does align with the comp plan's goal of providing aging-in-place housing. It's in demand within Dunwoody. SLOP twenty dash oh two C, this request is to reduce the interior side yard setback from fifteen feet to zero feet, and to reduce the rear yard setback from thirty feet to ten feet. This request is, when you compare it to the, the previous one, it's actually similar and less in some ways than the original plan. Under M A nineteen oh two, the approval setbacks are zero feet for the interior side yard setback and ten feet for the rear yard. So the request has changed slightly with, with less encroachment along the rear yard. SLOP twenty dash oh two D, this request is to reduce the minimum floor-to-floor height required at the ground level of the multifamily building from fourteen feet to nine feet. And I want to point out in my staff memo, I mentioned floor-to-ceiling height, and that's a typo. The ordinance does say floor-to-floor height, which is measured from the base floor to the, the top of the next level or next story above that. Based upon the urban design principles in the perimeter, we feel that this doesn't align with our urban design goals to really have kind of a tall base along the street to activate the street. So we aren't supportive of this request. We would request that they keep the height at fourteen feet as opposed to nine. And finally, SLOP twenty dash oh two E, this is to allow an exception to section twenty-seven dash one oh five B two for residential uses on the ground floor. This kind of plays back to the previous SLOP. We feel that the, the street frontage should be activated with active uses. These could be, this use is associated with, with the building, the multifamily building, or they could incorporate restaurants or retail if, if that's warranted, or if that would work. But we, we would request that residential uses be maintained along the non-street-facing sections of the multifamily building. And we've added a condition, condition twenty, that stipulates that the frontage along the street would contain active uses. So with that, we are recommending approval of slops A, B, C, and E with the twenty conditions listed, and we are I'm sorry, I think I, I made a typo there. It should be SLOP twenty dash oh two D be denied. So the twenty dash oh two is related to the floor, to floor heights. So with that, I will turn it back over to the planning commission. I'd be glad to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. With that, we have ten minutes in favor. There's a little bit of enough time to talk about it. If not, we're supposed to be liberal to given that there are five different items on here. So with that, those in favor would be the applicant first, I'm sure. Ms. David?
Thank you, good to see you all, although I can't really see you. We're strange times, so I appreciate you all continuing the city's business. And I'm assuming, just give us a shout if you can't hear me, or if something is not very clear. Wondering if I can share my screen, it looks like I can do that. So John Olson, as usual, has probably covered everything in such detail that I probably have about a third of what I was going to say left. So thank you, John, for that. You've always done a very thorough job, and we appreciate working with you. Just give a quick run-through a couple of slides, because there were a couple of points that I wanted to show you, and I don't know if you can see this. Sorry. This happens before, and I cannot figure this out. So I'm gonna stop this, because it's somehow I've ended up in show a taskbar. Okay. Can everybody see the PowerPoint now?
We see it.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna work with this one. I don't know what was going on in the other one, apologize. There were just a couple of nuances on, on this that I did want to cover. So you'll notice that there is, you know, the vehicular entrance here, which is the same that was programmed for the last rezoning. And we've included all of the streetscape and street improvements here, including the pedestrian crossing that we had also programmed in the last efforts. The difference here mainly is we're showing a continuous frontage on Ashford Dunwoody Road, although we still do have outdoor dining and the wide streetscape there. And we're also showing a pedestrian cut-through here. And what happens there as we go up a level is that a roof plaza goes over that pedestrian area and creates a large outdoor terrace area that can be, part of it will probably be exclusive to, you know, a restaurant here, perhaps. Part of it will be, could potentially be for part of the multifamily building. Here's a side view, this is actually, was on a very small little inset in one of the drawings that we submitted. But you can see that there's a rather grand outdoor seating terrace area there, which is sort of on the, on the corner and wrapping around to the other side. And then as we go up, the multifamily building, this is the third level. You'll notice that this third level steps back here, which creates the opportunity for some outside, outside dining here on the inside of the development. And then the multifamily building starts to span over the entrance and the entire area here. And then eventually, at the upper levels, will encompass part of the parking deck and will create the opportunity perhaps for an additional amenity area there over the deck. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to, and my patience and my technological skills just to, to run through that, because I do think they, it's important to understand that there's, you know, lots of nuances in the architecture of the building so that it won't feel like a, a large bulk mass at the street level. Now, also for SLOP D regarding the floor-to-floor height, confess, we were a little confused on the measurements, but we're prepared to withdraw that request now that we understand how that measured, how that is measured better. We can do the same floor-to-floor and will work with either the interior space as needed. We can do the same floor to floor and we'll work with either the interior space as needed. However, we obviously do still want the residential uses at the ground floor level. It includes the ground floor to the east of that pedestrian walkway. And it is, to be honest, no less than what is happening on the property adjacent, which is a all multifamily building. So, you know, you, we would have the commercial uses on Ashford Dunwoody. We would turn those commercial uses would wrap around the corner there. And then as you're walking down perimeter center east, it would then be predominantly residential. And, you know, I think enough of you have been to parts of Atlanta where the Belt Line is, you know, a residential use can be a very active, active use at the ground floor level. And that is sort of what we're we're aiming for. And without it, ask for your support. I know John Di Giovanni is in in the audience, as is our architect, if you have any questions that I can't answer. But we'll take your questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney David. Are there any other folks speaking in favor of this application online or in our presence? All right. Hearing none, is there anyone speaking in opposition to this application? Either online or in person? I don't hear from anybody. All right, well, with that then, as is typical, we'll close the public comment component and turn it over to the planning commissioners to see if they have any questions. Commissioner Abrams will perhaps start on your end. And as they say, we have to eat the mic to make it work for everybody.
Okay. Let's see here. I think my first, just kind of my first thought is, you know, truth be told, just just speaking for Dunwoody, you know, I think multifamily retirement type project is kind of a kind of a boring one, to be honest. It's, it's, I don't know, I'd like to see something a little bit more exciting going here. This that space has been vacant for a long time. A lot of folks have tried to go in there and do something. I don't know why. A lot of times it ends up not happening, but I would just really like to see something, I don't know, a little bit more exciting in there. I definitely would like to see, you know, commercial and retail on the on the bottom floor and on the, you know, on the street, especially, of course, on Ashford Dunwoody and maybe down the perimeter center side as well. But I don't know, it's just going to be, you know, kind of a kind of a dead zone. I mean, it's not going to draw a lot of, you know, folks in there. Like I said, it's just not not going to be too exciting at all. But I would just say, you know, I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I mean, we need senior living in this in this in Dunwoody, of course. I would just try to make, you know, it as beautiful as possible and again, try to put some retail on the outside and try to make it, you know, hopefully there's some other reasons that folks would go there. You know, just besides it being a senior living center, I guess. So that's just kind of my first, I think, you know, I definitely don't want, I'm glad that you guys withdrew the the floor to floor height. I think that was a little small and I definitely would not want to approve that. But, um, you know, I think, you know, looking at the recommendations of the staff, I would definitely want want you guys to adhere to those as well. That's just kind of my, kind of my initial, my initial thoughts there, I guess.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Wagner. All right, just any questions or comments?
Yeah, just want to make sure I'm clear here. So A, B, C, and E staff recommends approval with their conditions. And for D, the applicant's going to withdraw that, so that's not necessary any longer. And just making sure the applicant, Ms. David, all the conditions that the staff recommended for the A, B, C, and E, you're okay with?
Yes, we are. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Yes, yes, we're good with those.
All right, that's my question. Clarifying questions, thank you.
Ms. Sure.
Right? Yes, sir. Ms. David, how do the design cues of the actual building change from being a hotel to being senior living? Are we widening doorways? Are we changing bathrooms for ADA accommodations? What other than the name senior living is going to designate these as amenable for senior citizens for folks perhaps with limited mobility?
I'm going to let our architect or or John D., could you address that?
If you could introduce yourself, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is John Di Giovanni and I represent JSJ Perimeter LLC, the owner of the property, developer. Just to clarify, there is a difference between senior living and what we're doing. Our product is age restricted, not senior living. So we're not providing any assistance or any special ADA requirements other than whatever is code for a building of this type. It's 55 and older. I'm older than 55. I would be a resident here. Some of you other folks, not to guess what your age is, might be residents there as well. So I just want to make that distinction. It is age restricted, not senior living. So it's no different than any other multifamily development, other than the fact that you have to be 55 or older. And this was a product that the city had told us initially, when we first started looking at the uses on the property, that was a desired use for this area.
Second, secondary question, will there be direct ingress and egress from multiple floors of the parking garage, between that parking garage and that building structure? And what will the ingress and ingress be to that building?
For the multifamily?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we believe that it will be direct access from the parking direct right into the building. So if you park your car, you walk right into your floor. Except for, of course, whatever is built on top of the parking deck. We we propose to build some on top of there. That you would take an elevator out. But you wouldn't have to exit the parking deck.
Okay, but we are looking at floor by floor, with that exception, floor by floor access to the building from the from the parking deck.
Correct.
Okay, but I, but and I'm just going to ask you to make sure my understanding is correct here. There is no fundamental difference between the structure and design of this building and any other building, other than the fact that we're only going to allow these to be purchased by people of a certain age. There's no additional amenity, door width, or handicap bars or anything along those lines beyond what's required by basic code. That's going to distinguish this building from a standard building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set, sir.
All right. Commissioner Harris?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. I noted on one of the slides that it indicated that the residential portion could go up to 14 stories.
Right, the maximum height allowed is 14 stories. Now, we're not sure where will be 14 stories and where where it will be less. For instance, on the ground level, it probably would be less. And then over the garage, it might exceed, might go up to the 14 stories. We like to vary the height of the building so it adds character and appeal to the overall structure.
Could the city remind me, when the previous rendition with the hotel, what was the maximum stories that was allowed?
That that was approved at 11 stories.
Okay.
And that was a condition of the site plan, I believe, or there might have.
I think it was 12.
12, yeah.
Yeah, I remember going back and forth about that. Thank you. And then my next question would be, how many units are you proposing?
Roughly 200 units, give or take. We are, we are asking for approval of 225, which would be the maximum.
Okay, and number of bedrooms?
That varies. We haven't designed the interior out yet, but it would be a range of units from what we call a senior or junior one bedroom to a two bedroom.
And then in regards to the 14 stories, how does the number of stories of the residential unit compare to neighboring buildings and the height of those residential units?
Well, believe the the building behind us is five, probably five stories, if it's a stick frame structure. I believe that's correct.
Richard or John, do you guys know surrounding residential? Is it only five is the max of the surrounding?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's an O and I district, which allows up to five stories. But under a PC two, you can go up to 14 stories.
Perfect. And then the last question I have is in regards to the amenity deck that was possibly there. What's the vision for that amenity deck?
Well, we have an amenity area that's on the ground level. And then depending on how that is designed out on the over the parking deck, it could be another amenity deck that includes a pool or an outdoor, we sometime refer to it as a pocket park, where you have some seating and maybe bocce ball and lawn bowling and which is bocce ball and some other, some other activities up there. I mean, at that height, we we think that's a great location to put some sort of amenity.
No, I'm, I would agree with that. I'm concerned over the, I think, the lack of what some feels like commitment to that. It's a possible amenity deck versus mandatory. And then the last question, could the city clarify for me? It looks like there's a pool that would be fronting the street. Is that something that the city said that they did not want to see there?
We, we didn't comment on the pool as far as the rezoning at this point. I guess.
Expectations of fencing to block the the view of that or?
I'm sorry?
Would there be fencing or wall to block the view from the streetscape of the pool?
I, yes, I would assume there would be, yes.
That's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Price.
All right. Got a lot of questions. Covered a lot around there. My questions are, I guess, hoping to get a little bit of education on the age restriction. How is that codified? Is that part of the the slump and the rezoning that restricts it? Or can the, can the age restriction be, you know, removed by the owner later on if they decide the unit turns selling?
I'm not sure, maybe Ms. David answers that?
Yeah, it it's sort of two-pronged. They first would be the the zoning conditions. There is a specific category in the zoning code that discusses age restricted multifamily, which requires a slump. So it is that type of slump that we're asking for, and that's what would be granted. So the zoning would restrict it. It would also be restricted through probably covenants for the residence, you know, leasing documents. The Fair Housing Act has, I guess, there was probably some court cases, but in its infinite wisdom is decided 55 is the number that you can restrict by age without coming afoul of the Fair Housing Act. So that's why it's, it's almost always age restricted to 55 and older.
And then clarifying here also, that doesn't restrict the ability of, say, school aged children to live in that building. Is that correct? If like grandparents got control or custody of children, their children would be able to live there? Is that, is that a safe observation?
Yeah, they'd have to be the the legal guardian for the child, but yes.
Wouldn't, I would hate, I'm just thinking.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. And nor, you know, in a lot of these, you find it is age restricted to, if it's a married couple, it's age restricted to one of the couples. So if one of them is older, you're in, and, you know, the other partner can be younger and they don't have to get divorced.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I just, I was just imagining a scenario where potentially someone got custody and would have to move. And then my second question, I guess, is for staff, just to kind of make sure that I understand what's going on with Slup E and condition number 20. So as I read it, condition 20 is kind of a compromise between what the applicant wants and what our current requirements have. Is that, is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah, I mean, basically, we, we want to have active uses on the, on the street frontage. And we're not opposed to the idea of having residential. And if you read the condition, they would still be allowed to do some, some form of residential, like maybe like a live work unit or something to that extent. But we, we will look at it for, you know, maybe it's a lobby space or there might be some active uses associated with the building. If it's a 14-story building, we would assume that there's maybe a leasing office or something. So the idea is just to put those uses along the street frontage and somehow activate that section of the building instead of having just a line of residential along that street.
And if I could jump in, I think the intent is to put those types of uses on the the ground floor level. You know, there's probably going to be a little gym of some sort as well, or a couple of workout rooms. I think the fear is that there may not be enough leasing space and and other common space to cover the entire length of the building going all the way down perimeter center east, which is why we're asking for the slump. It's, it's not necessarily to put residential along the entire frontage. It's to have that flexibility.
All right, thank you. That's the solid questions I have right now. All right, let me, let me ask a few, then we'll do another round of questioning. So this is the first time I've been able to see the elevation because that was not part of our package, as I recollect. And so first, I couldn't tell from the rendering that you showed, do these units have balconies?
Yes, we presume they'll have that.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
So they all, okay, great. So.
And to clarify, I did not show rendering of the multifamily building. We're in a, you know, similar situation as we were with the hotel, that that has not yet been designed. So we didn't want to commit to a particular, you know, elevation or look if for some reason it needed to be changed later. So that is why we're, again, as before, the same as we did with hotel, that we would ask to go back to city council with the the elevations for the building once it's been designed for them to review.
Okay, so help me understand, you're saying that you'll come back to all of us or just the city council once the design characteristics are met? How does that work?
The, well, last time it was just city council, I think, John, wasn't it? That that was.
City council put that condition on the approved plan. So when they approved the site, under the previous zoning, they said that you would come back, but the hotel never came to fruition. So they never brought those architectures forward to city council.
All right. But the city council didn't suggest that. It also got to the planning commission just as well for that one.
I'm sorry.
Am I correct in concluding that the city council said it comes back to them with the building characteristics, but not to the planning commission to consider?
That's the way the condition was written, yes.
I would, I would suggest if it happens in the future, it should come to us as well. The reason I ask that question is, is you as a builder and developer probably know the answer, but I think everybody should. When you're creating residential space in towers especially, there's a school of thought that suggests the units themselves should have either through open windows, doors, or balconies, the ability for the occupants to be able to kind of engage the outdoors, even though they're relatively high.
That's correct.
Goes a long ways towards creating a sense of place and community for the people that live in these buildings as opposed to being, you know, blockhouses, for lack of a better term. So you, you probably know a heck of a lot more than I do about that, but I've seen the difference between when they have them and when they don't. And, you know, from my mind's eye, that theory carries a lot of weight. So I would submit to you, while the renderings we have here now are somewhat conceptual design plans as opposed to what will be based on Attorney David's representation, that either committing to these things now or coming back, if that's what the process suggests, will allow. will allow us to, you know, see the look, which is important. So the second question I have has to do with this question of whether the ground level on essentially the residential components should be activated with commercial uses. As I reflect on what the buildings look like at the ground level, we have essentially three different pods. The one with the residential, one with the commercial, and then the one in the middle. As the applicant is looking at this, are they asking that the one in the middle be residential at the ground floor or would that one be commercial?
It is anticipated to be residential on the ground floor.
For the middle one?
For the middle one, right. Are you talking about the smaller piece?
Correct, correct.
Goes right.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I I appreciate the applicant's observation that as you get into the larger residential component, the one that's more to the east, that's probably a little bit disengaged from where the commercial activity might be on Asher Dunwoody. Asher Dunwoody, of course, is the one where the commercial makes sense. And like the three bears, you have the mama bear, papa bear, and the baby bear. The the middle one is like the mama bear. But to me, that might suggest that one be activated with commercial activities while the other larger residential one, given its proximity closer to the other residential units for the neighbors, might be more sensible to be residential on the ground floor, if that makes sense to the folks on the panel and the applicant. That's a way to kind of, I think, you know, perhaps balance things out. The one question I have, and and this is a follow up on the age restriction. My presumption is you're building to what the market wants, which is a product like this that is designed for people who are not in their younger years, having a lot of kids. But perhaps those who are aging in place, like yourself and myself, right? Where, you know, you want this product that doesn't necessarily suit itself to having a lot of kids as part of the occupants of the building.
That's correct.
Okay.
It it's our, just so I can clarify. So the intention here is to build a class A product. Getting to your comments concerning the balconies. Clearly, we want to have outdoor space where people can congregate and go outdoors and enjoy the scene and the and the views from that location. And so we we expect to do a very enhanced amenities package that will attract that. The studies show that, and I think the city had first led us to that in that direction, that there are many people in the Dunwoody area who are getting older. They have large houses. They're empty nesters, if you remember that term from a few years ago. But don't want to leave the area. But they certainly want to live in a very class A environment. And that's the market we're trying to attract.
Right.
So.
So would you say that you would be distinguished from a garden apartment?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So here's my question. You're meeting what you see the market demand being for this product. Do you need the designation of fifty-five and older?
In terms of?
For you to be able to build and market your product. Does that do anything for you?
Well, it well, the the designation was one that the city had requested of us in our conversations with city council members. So we then went out and and explored the market to determine whether the the impression that there are folks who are living in Dunwoody in the perimeter area and are selling their larger homes and want to stay in the area but can't find a comparable product. They don't want to buy condo because they're they're at a point where they don't really want to own something. They really want to travel and not be tied down to responsibilities or, you know, repair of this thing or that thing.
Right.
They'd rather just rent. And so that's the market we're we're focused on. The 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 available pool of renters is much larger if you don't have the restriction, obviously. But that's a different product type.
Right. No, I mean, I I I gather, I I guess my point of it is, and it's more of a philosophical discussion than it is, I think, a market driven discussion. You've identified what the market wants, and I think you're correct that this is so distinguished from a garden apartment.
It'll make it more exclusive.
Yeah, and, you know, if you if you consider this, the Manhattan, for example, is not a garden apartment. And so when you look at the Manhattan, which has no age restriction, I think you've suggested this before, there are very few kids who live there.
That's correct. Yeah, very few kids live there. Maybe a handful of children go to school. But there is a younger crowd there. And from my perspective, I personally prefer it because I don't want to be the.
The old geezer in the room?
I don't want to be the youngest person in my building.
Right. And and here's my point on that, and 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 this is important. When we look at this market and this product, this is not cheap. For whomever chooses to live here, it will not be on the lower end of the scale for rental in the perimeter market, or quite frankly, for Atlanta.
That's correct.
Having said that, I look at the office towers that we have around here. I look at the medical professional industry, which is centered here in southeast United States. We call that Pill Hill. And a lot of folks who may be under fifty-five that are extremely highly skilled people that would like a product like this because, you know, while a lot of folks may be traveling, these are folks that are working at our, you know, for example, eighteen hour days, right? In somebody's different occupations that are highly skilled, professional licensed folk. And, you know, with that, does it mean that we shouldn't allow this product to be available to them simply because they suffer the curse of being forty-five?
Well, like I said, for us as a developer, it certainly opens the market to a larger pool of renters, but I'll have to defer to the city. Our our direction was is that a a market rate product would not get approved. But they would consider the fifty-five and older because they deem that a necessary use, a necessary product in the market, given the the exodus of people in that age group.
Right. And, you know, with that, and 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 I'll, and I don't want to occupy the entire dais here with this conversation. But when High Street came in, catty cornered to it where the restaurant used to be that now was the first building for State Farm. What was proposed there by Jim Borders, who you may know as a developer in the Atlanta region, was a tower that a hundred percent of the units were one bedroom, basically. And I was an advocate for the High Street one because it had a mix of units. And I was an opponent to the Borders Tower because it did not. My feeling was in great concern that when you have a product that just is one hundred percent of anything in terms of the folk that live there, it's not as healthy of a lifestyle for the people who are there in the community in which these people live. In other words, the mix.
Right.
And I understand the concerns that we all have, whether you have kids or not in this city of ours over the impact on schools that kids might create. Appreciating that, and I literally look at what is this product doing? And this product, given the way that you've represented it will be and going through this process, it will be very similar, in my opinion, to what the Manhattan is, which is a building that caters to a lot of professionals like yourself, not a whole lot of kids. It's not a garden apartment, for example, that does tend to favor families that have more kids and therefore has more impact on our school systems that we're concerned about overcrowding, even though it's independent and we shouldn't be considering it to begin with. And I say that not because it's my opinion, but because that's what the, you know, codes kind of suggest that we should do, separate those two issues. But I only point that out in terms of the conversation that there are some of us when answering the question, should we have imposed on the developer a statutory regulation that says you can't have people under fifty-five that are the primary people there? And to that end, I would submit to you, you you've got a lot of great components to this product. I mean, if you guys had noticed the cleverness of the way the different levels are and the plaza use of the space, we didn't have that before with the other project. This one does.
Right.
I I would submit the open plaza that you say may be optional. I mean, that that's a great thing. I mean, that that's the kind of thing that, you know, when you're putting a lot of people in the in a common area, having those amenities around there is a big plus to making that a much better product. But anyway, that those are some of my questions and comments on on this. And, you know, from kind of splitting the baby on the ground level activation to 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 the question of what you all feel about over fifty-five requirement when the product is designed for people that, quite frankly, are are not going to have a whole lot of kids. So anyway, I I throw it back. I know there were probably follow up questions amongst all the planning commissioners. So if if we want to start back with you, Commissioner Abram, if you have any more follow up questions or comments?
Yeah, a question about what what does the applicant feel about the recommendations made by staff? Are you guys okay with all of those?
Yes, we don't have any objections to any of those recommendations. And and just for the record, if the city would allow us to move forward, we're we're not going to say no if you want to remove the restriction of fifty-five and older. That that would be okay with us.
And just to clarify, the, when you say recommendations, I believe you're talking about the conditions that are proposed for the slop and the rezoning. We do not agree with the recommendation that there should be only commercial active uses on the ground floor.
Right. That that which is a slop itself.
Right.
So you had the staff recommendation, which I think Commissioner Abram was referring to, that you're okay with their recommendations. Obviously, Attorney David clarified that does not include the activation, I think, by the law.
Correct.
This last thing I'll, I guess I'll say is, you know, I I feel better, you know, hearing hearing more about this now. No, I just don't, you know, what I my comments before, I just don't want it to be like a like a closed off, you know, and and you obviously clarified, it's not a senior living type community. It's more like, you know, the Manhattan where folks are coming in and out. You know, there's, you know, amenities on the ground floor. There's maybe some, you know, commercial and retail. There's open space. You know, that type of thing. Just don't want it to be like a closed off senior living type where you go in, you stay in, not a lot of people going in and out. It was more, you know, inviting to to folks walking by and to, you know, you know, the folks there were going out at night and going to some of the restaurants and locations around. You know, something like that would would be more ideal.
Yeah, and that that's exactly the concept. We want folks to energize the retail that we've put on the site. It's an amenity to the entire development. They can take an elevator down to the ground floor and walk over and have dinner and walk back, go to the mall. I mean, all of the things that surround the site, including the adjacent shopping center with alons and the other eateries, this is all very appealing to folks with disposable income.
Yeah, part exactly, and that's and that's fantastic. You know, as as you say, it is like a an older places that, you know, you could do that off site where those folks don't need to be in the middle perimeter. But, yeah, like how the Manhattan, you know, as as Ed just said, it's getting has some older, you know, fifty plus. It has some younger folks. I like that. So, yeah, I I definitely don't mind the age restriction as well. But, you know, I want to see what the other, you know, folks say about that, so.
Commissioner Mike?
Yeah, a question, just to clarify, I don't understand where exactly the age restriction came from. Was it city council or was it staff?
It's not fair, I think, for the applicant. The applicant is probably advised through the staff. And just by general observation that there is a general concern about having residential rental apartments being passed. And one of the ways that it's been presented, I believe, and anybody correct me if I'm wrong on the call or otherwise, is that if you have a restriction that makes it easier for the policymakers to process this way, this with residential rental units. And so we had this come up before with the project on Barbara's Drive.
So residential rental, it's different from the Manhattan. We are condos and we're.
Well, get get this though, I mean, yes, and and I so the Manhattan is owner occupied. But so too were the homes that were being built across from Austin Elementary, right? Those are owner occupied homes. And yet the response was we want those to be resident, excuse me, age restricted as well. And we had that conversation about how much that really made sense right across the street from an elementary school. I'll leave that to you all. But in this instance, I think we've heard from the applicant and you see how the product is being proposed and the price point associated with it. That its outcome will be very similar to the Manhattan in that you're not going to have large families moving into a tower, essentially a fourteen stories if it goes that high, that you have a lot of kids because it's not big enough or it doesn't have the amenities that are attractive to those folk. In contrast, I think you're correct. It does lend itself exceedingly well towards people who want to age in place in Dunwoody, whose kids are gone. They want to travel. But I also think it caters to a very high level professional person of which we have a whole lot of them right here, which is a great thing, by the way. We have Fortune five hundred companies here, executives and medical professionals that I believe a product like this would be very attractive to them.
I would like to add, that's that's what kind of caught my attention when you mentioned that. I reflect on our building, and we have several professionals and medical professionals that come in Monday through Friday, UPS, docs, they come in Monday through Friday and go back home to their families on the weekends.
Right, and and that's that's.
There's quite a few doctors that fly up here from Miami and.
There are, there are, and and, you know, yes, there are a whole lot to do just exactly what you said.
No, I understand where the age restriction comes into play with respect to the with the rental.
Well, I think the concern is is less what the market would end up producing as opposed to what makes it perhaps easier politically, for lack of a better term.
Okay, thanks.
We're just a recommending body, by the way, so we take all of our expertise and provide it to the planning, excuse me, to the council members.
I found it very interesting, and I just I just want to make a comment. At at no point until I believe I heard Bob say, did anybody use the word apartment? Because we're being asked to approve an apartment. And we know that that's become a bad word at certain times and certain cases. And and, you know, it it was not the flag that was being waved here. And I would almost say that the lead's kind of buried in that regard. And I think that is the the impetus for the fifty-five and up is to kind of push through that general reluctance on behalf of everybody here in Dunwoody to approve apartments due to the 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 schools and all the other issues that we can't necessarily, you know, consider as we make this decision, but still is is potentially significant. And I would suggest that, you know, in in using the amalgam of the Manhattan, which I believe I heard you say Ed was owner occupied. That is not preventing the weekly commuters from utilizing the Manhattan as a place to spend weeks and go home. I don't believe that there is necessarily such a call for that that we're likely to fill another building. I don't know. But I'm not eager to throw out the age restriction and and thus expose ourselves to potential growth that that may require more study, may require more inquiry before we talk about adding another two hundred plus units to this area. So just my my thoughts on the matter. But again, you know, I think there's a lot of good here, but I I want to be careful about slipping too far down getting rid of some of these restrictions.
Commissioner Harris?
I have a couple more questions. In regards to previously with the hotel, I remember one of the discussions we had was around traffic impact. And when it was a hotel, I remember us leaning on the side that predominantly those users would be utilizing Uber type of transport. So we weren't quite as focused on the traffic impact. Alternatively, when we're looking at adding up to two hundred twenty-five units of residents, I'm curious about what that traffic impact is perceived to be.
Do you want the staff or?
I'll take anybody. I'll take staff or developer.
Do you have a, do we have a traffic study on this?
There there wasn't a traffic study submitted with this. I will say this, the hotel had a hundred and sixty units, I believe. And this goes up to two hundred and twenty-five units. So when it comes to occupancy, I think you can argue that the multifamily building will will have more people. But as far as the study of how they're going to come and go and at what times, we don't know what that demand is and and how that will impact the roads.
Well, it's it's been our experience that the multifamily building actually has, given the location and the the amount of. the amount of retail and other amenities around the site, that is an extremely highly walkable location. And that in other circumstances where we've done this, it actually reduced the traffic count. And we have already committed to contributing to the extension of the turn lane when we had originally done the hotel. But no one's going to be in, for the most part, driving to dinner when you can walk to the restaurant on the site or walk over to the shopping center across the street or walk over to the mall. There's really no reason for someone to utilize a vehicle in that circumstance.
Okay, I understand that. I do believe though, if we're talking about professionals, that there is a likelihood that vehicles would be utilized in order to move themselves from work and then back. So that is a concern of mine. The next question I have is when, again, when we were looking at this previously, if you look to the east, the building to the east, I remember this conversation, because we had the conversation on the parking garage and beautification of parking garages and the impact on the building next to it, which is a residential building. And the residents in that building, what they would be looking at. So as I go through the schematics of the proposed residential building, now we're moving to something that it looks like including the parking deck could go up to fourteen stories, which seems like it might have quite a large impact on the building next to it all the way up and then overtaking the building. We'd also be on top of, I mean, I know the parking deck before was going to be allowed to also encroach on that setback area. But now we're encroaching on the setback area and up to fourteen stories. So have we had discussed discussions, city and or developer, with the residents next door to understand their feelings on this development in terms of height and reduced setback?
Well, with regard to the parking garage, we had already committed to screen the parking garage on the rear. The building behind us is actually sits lower than our, our site does. So if I'm not mistaken here, two levels of our parking structure will be above their roof line. And then anything above that, whether it's, you know, two floors or up to fourteen, will be above their roof and shouldn't have a visual impact on the building behind us. But we are already committed to screening the parking deck for the floors of the deck that actually interact with the multifamily building. The existing multifamily building.
Okay, thank you. I do think that if I had, I would, again, not having, not having the residential building mock-up to be able to see, it makes it different. Like, I hear pieces and this, it is a concern to me that we don't have the residential building mock-up for this project. I think, Bob, you've mentioned there are some great parts about it, but in terms of being able to, for me personally, to consider it holistically, I would have appreciated seeing a mock-up of that building to know which stories were where. And I do submit that even though that other building was below grade, I think having another potential ten stories on top of that would, I'd be interested to know what the development next door, how they felt.
I will point out that we did reach out to them when we were originally proposing a, the twelve-story hotel for that area with the parking deck and did not receive any response.
Robert, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions for staff primarily. And the first is for SLUP twenty-two B. If we approve this, this allows, it doesn't require age-restricted housing, is that correct?
It doesn't.
Okay, I just, because that's a discussion, I don't know where we're headed with that, but I want to make sure we're not shoehorning ourselves in with that. And then my other question, now that I think, I've just been kind of noodling on this, twenty-two E. Is there some reason that the staff didn't just recommend this be denied to begin with? Or can, I guess, can you take me kind of through your thought process on conditioning this rather than just denying this or recommending denial of this request?
So we felt that you can still activate the street. Like, probably not be able to get a hundred percent, but the possibility of having some maybe residential stoops or live-work units. So we didn't want to rule out multifamily along the street frontage. But we definitely wanted to have something there that said that we need active uses along the front. Did that answer your question or did I?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, get another, another round of thought on that. Those are the only two questions I have.
Let me make an observation, and you bring up, Commissioner Harris, a good point, height. Height is always a challenge. But one thing I would note, we have Ravinia one and Ravinia two. Ravinia three is the tallest of them, as I recall, that are at least fourteen stories right next to this apartment complex that you're referring to, that is five or six stories, I think it's five. But the idea that they're impacted, they're currently impacted by an office building that does look over them. I think to the applicant's point, though, that once you get above a certain number of stories, you're already up there anyway. So essentially, if you have people go out, they're just looking down on the roof. As you look up, you're already looking once, you know, something's built next to you.
Bob, can I really quickly just respond to that point, though?
Yeah, well, but I just want to just, just make those observations about height. And this has to do with density and is a general concept.
For me, it's a setback. So I would question the distance from Ravinia to this property versus this one. This is about a twenty-five-foot setback between balcony to balcony, it looks like.
Right, and the most impact will be at the common heights. So if I'm looking directly across the building next door to me, I will see the windows of the building next door to me. If I'm ten stories above that, it'll be very difficult just because of the angle of the view, which is, I think, what the applicant was trying to point out.
That's exactly right.
And you're exactly right, Ravinia is further back, don't get me wrong. It's also taller, but it is further back and so I'm not discounting that at all. That's just, you know, as they say, the way they are. Density, and that's an important thing. We don't like to use the word apartments or density, do we? Somehow or another, they cause people to get excited. But where are we in the perimeter? And what do we have in the perimeter? This is right across from Perimeter Mall, which Perimeter Mall is a parcel, if you consider the footprint, has a MARTA station as part of it. It has a walkway to it. And we know that the PCID, in conjunction with working with the city, is working to develop a significant multi-use trail system throughout the perimeter area. And if you look to the east of this, that trail system is imparting constructed vis-à-vis the bridge that goes over the creek behind perimeter center on the east side. So there's a new park that's going in there as well. And so this is kind of in the area of it. So I would submit to you that by having more people live here, they're taking advantage of this investment that all of us collectively have made in this, not just Dunwoody, but in this region, as it relates to transit, as well as some of the other amenities that we call parks and multi-use trails. So to the point of, you know, yes, the setback certainly came up when it was at a hotel and of course comes up today. But the height, once you get above a certain level, really begs the question of density. And I submit to you, given the amenities of this perimeter area, that it can support this. And I think it's important to recognize who are attracted to places like this. They're not folks who are just a hundred percent car-centric. They're people who like to have an alternative mode of transportation, either walking, biking, or taking transit that is available in a walking distance from here. So with that, let me, you know, and again, it's for the commissioners to craft any kind of motion. But, you know, we've had a lot of conversation about different issues and one of which is the age restriction. The other has to do with whether or not we want to see a rendering of this down the road, you know, coming back and being able to see that and comment on that. And trying to look at my notes here. I guess to confirmation that SLUP twenty-two D, as in David, isn't necessary anymore. And then the question of how do we activate the ground level for the portion that's not on Asher Dunwoody, which I guess are essentially two buildings in effect at the ground level.
Correct.
And, you know, you want to do what the applicant wants, what the staff wants, or submit the baby? So anyway, that was some of the main conversation points that we had. So with that, unless there are any more questions or comments by the planning commissioners, I think that we're probably ready for a motion.
I had a couple of questions, Bob.
Oh, you have a question?
Yeah, I got a couple more questions.
Oh, great, please.
I want to ask John real quick. You mentioned screening on the parking deck. What does that mean exactly? What do you guys use for screening?
Well, it's any number of materials, but the concern was that the lights in the parking deck would shine into the apartment building. So some form of louvers or some mechanism that would be attached to the back of the parking deck to deaden the light so it doesn't bother the folks that are living in the.
Okay, so not like ivy or foliage, like a black screen or some sort or something like that?
It's mechanically attached.
But there's also landscaping proposed for that area to, between the deck and the adjacent apartment complex. And I think they've got a pretty healthy band of trees on their side of the property line as well before it actually gets to their building.
Yeah, the landscaping's probably changed a little bit since we were looking at it before. But the parking structure was going to have, and we would still propose on the side facing the adjacent apartments, prefinished aluminum louver systems, because most of the concern was about the light spillage. And so we can, we can manage that with the lights we use and the, and the louver system. And then there'll be a knee wall for the bottom three feet anyway. So we're really talking about just the motion of the cars going down the ramp or something. And then the other thing I'd like to say, in terms of the debt, previously when it was a hotel, the hotel building did not conceal the entire street-facing side of the deck. We are now putting units on the entire public view of the deck structure now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, another question I had, can you divulge to us what price points you guys are thinking?
We don't have that fully determined yet, but we, it will be probably higher than current market prices in the area. Given the amenities and the finishes we intend to put in the building.
I got this final question is maybe for staff. Was the age restriction, was that, is that specifically to prevent, you know, having, having children and kids in this, in this development? You know, and is there, is there any way, you know, going back to Ed in the Manhattan, he said that they have a lot of, you know, younger folks. But even with that, there's still not a lot of kids. And is that, you know, is that the only way to prevent, you know, having a lot of kids? You know, and the reason I ask this is obviously, you know, going back to the apartments and, you know, we don't want to try to you know, burden the school system and that on the elementary schools around here and any more than we can. So is that the only way to, you know, prevent doing that is having the age restriction, I guess?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all that there, but I think you're saying about the age restriction and the children, something to that effect?
Yeah, is that the main reason for putting the age restriction? Is it because to limit the amount of children that are going to be in this development or is it strictly because, you know, the city says that we need more living space for, you know, fifty-five and up?
It really goes back to our comm plan and creating the necessary housing that's needed for folks that are looking for housing to age in place. Right now, there's just, there's not a lot of options out there. And age-restricted does not preclude children from living in the place, I believe, so.
So it has nothing to do with trying to lessen the impact on schools or, you know, overcrowded schools?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, I was just, I was just, I mean, you know, that's why we don't want to have, you know, apartments because, you know, the schools are overcrowded as they are right now. So I was just, just curious. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Any of you are ready for motions? That'd be appropriate. And let me just say that this is one of the good times when a few years back, the city council made the point that, you know, providing them with advice, in other words, our reasoning behind what we ask or say is very helpful to them. So that's why our conversation here is great and the motion reflecting those things would be great, too.
I have a clarification question. So the conditions that the staff has recommended, which of the SLUPS or rezoning will those be attached to?
So I think, yeah, that's a fair question. So John, the SLUP itself is where those conditions exist, is that correct?
Right. So all those conditions are carried into the SLUPS because they're married with the zoning request.
Right, so you would have, and we're going to have several votes on this one, just like we did before. So we'll have the one vote where the conditions would exist, and if they need to be modified or accepted in total, then that's where that would be made. And then we'll go through each of the separate SLUPS and a motion on each of those would then be forthcoming.
So the conditions would not, for the rezoning, the conditions would not be attached, but they would be for each of the subsequent SLUPS, is that?
You know, I think.
I seem to hear some contradictory answer on that.
So you have the rezoning, which is item number three, which is where the conditions are attached.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's where the conditions exist. So if the staff's recommendation is approval of that rezoning with their recommended conditions, that's where we would either echo that or modify it or reject it.
All right, so the first motion will be the more complex one, probably, because it'll have.
Well, it might or might not be. I mean, it could be as simple as I move to approve RZ two-zero-three with staff recommendation. It could be just that simple, or it could be different.
May I note that if we do approve PC two, PC two, as a matter of right, and I'll ask staff to correct me, PC two is made up primarily of employment uses, shopfront, retail, residential and services. So we do open the door to a variety of uses if we say yes to PC two. Just, that's a matter of right. So if we choose to cherry pick on down here with the SLUPS, we've got to be real careful about what we do because PC two, that approval right there is kind of the eight-hundred-pound gorilla, so to speak.
Right, you're rezoning it to a PC two, but it's also attached to a conditional site plan that limits the uses based upon what's listed.
Yeah, so those conditions limit what otherwise a PC two unlimited would provide and the SLUPS further constrain it.
Bob, can you just ask a question? And so I'm just curious. Is it, is it common practice or to not have a traffic study or to not have building mock-ups? And I do recall with the hotel, we were able to see, there were some renditions, because I remember seeing the lights with the restaurant that would have been in the hotel. And seeing some, seeing some, some general sort of pictures, nothing overly detailed. But are we, the reason I ask the question is, is it standard expectation or should we be okay with it? Because I feel like sometimes we have held other developers to the standards of the traffic studies they've brought forward. And so to not necessarily have a complete package leaves me slightly uncomfortable. And I'm wondering if I am out of place in that discomfort that that's not something we should necessarily expect.
So from a historical perspective, and God knows I've been around long enough, maybe too long by some people's opinion, but the question of have we held things for lack of a traffic study, the answer is yes. But the, uh, question of have we held things for lack of a traffic study? The answer is yes. The question of have we held things for not having significantly sufficient renderings? The answer has been yes. Flip side of that is have we passed things without a traffic study? The answer is yes. And have we passed things without renderings? The answer is yes. So having said that, the question is for this application, what is it that you need in order for you to make a, an informed decision as to what your recommendation should be to the city council? And you've heard the presentation of the staff and the applicant, along with our questioning of both. And so you can only judge for yourself, I think, whether they're sufficient. And if there's not, then, you know, certainly your request for that additional information would give us the one opportunity to defer. But I think in fairness to the system, the staff and the applicant, we would need to be pretty specific of what it is that we're looking for in order to allow us to make that informed decision if we don't have that information today. In other words, if it's immaterial, it's probably not fair. If it's material, and this is judged by you, by the way, not by me, then that's something certainly to consider for your own perspective. So that, I think your points are are very well taken in that regard. And, you know, we've, we've heard a lot of new information tonight for sure, which has been good, I think. Uh, we've seen some things that we hadn't seen before. But you have to judge for yourself whether you feel satisfied that that information is sufficient. And if not, what is it that you need to be able to make an informed decision as to how to recommend this to the city council? So, um, by the way, if we don't do anything, it just goes to the city council with no recommendation. So just keep that in mind. So, um, now, I I, you know, anyway, you.
Well, I'll throw something out if we want to pick it apart and probably end up withdrawing it and resubmitting it. I will move that we approve RZ twenty dash three, um, with some, with the staff conditions, but with changes to those conditions. For condition number seventeen, I move that we remove the word age restricted. Um, I have a feeling this will end up being age restricted anyway, but your discussion convinced me that that was.
So your 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 motion would be all of the staff recommendations except for number seventeen, which you would modify?
Well, no, that's the first modification. Uh, I would, for the, for the first, then we would approve one through sixteen. For number seventeen, we would remove the word age restricted from that, just so it stipulates that the building will be fourteen stories in height. I don't think that says yes or no on age restricted. It just doesn't specify in the conditions. So I I it may be a meaningless change.
Okay, so you're moving for approval with removal of age restriction in numbers?
And then for number twenty, um, I'm not sure what to do with this. I I want to vote against Slup twenty dash two E, which would make condition number twenty moot because that's kind of the compromise position. So I guess I I I'm making a motion so I can switch to a question. So I'm going to withdraw my motion, and I'm going to now ask a question. If I make a motion and I plan to request that, um, we don't allow the Slup, uh, twenty dash two E, should we strike condition twenty or should we approve it? And then that will be.
The ways were presented to us is these are action items individually. So your first action on number three would be for the zoning itself. And if you feel it's appropriate to modify the conditions approved by, proposed by staff, modify it as part of your motion. So seventeen and twenty, you would say my motion is to modify those as follows.
Okay.
And then then if that motion gets a second, we will have discussion or not.
Okay.
And vote on that.
All right. So now I will, I will now make a motion that we approve, um, RZ twenty dash three with, um, two changes. One first, uh, or three changes, actually. The first, that, um, the staff conditions be attached with two exceptions. Uh, one is that staff condition number seventeen be changed to remove the word age restricted. And the second, that staff condition number twenty be removed from the list.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, that motion dies for the life of a second. Is there another motion?
I'll take a swing. And, uh, you know, I I I don't love doing this, but I'd like to know what would what would result. I I'm going to move that we defer with the specific request that a traffic study be conducted, and I'd like to see a traffic study bifurcated. A traffic study on what happens if the apartment building is fifty five and up. And a traffic study, uh, or a simulation based on if there is no age restriction, because I think that's important. And I think that any anybody that has official approval power over this is going to want to know what that impact is. And we're talking very specifically about potentially that not being desirable. So maybe, maybe the the intent of adding the fifty five and up isn't, uh, that doesn't make a hill of beans with regard to traffic, but we don't know that. So I'm going to recommend defer traffic study bifurcated fifty five and up and under fifty five, as well as additional, uh, elevation and site plan renderings, uh, with a particular eye toward impact on neighboring buildings. And I'll 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 rest there.
There's a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? So what this means is that we are deferring it with a request to the applicant. If we vote yes, that a traffic study be done, as you heard, and that, uh, the answer to the question of the difference between having age restricted or not, as to whether that changes the outcome of that traffic study. And then, um, secondly, the renderings that would show more specificity, I assume more like more on the, uh, elevations?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And before we vote, just by way of background, there has been a lot of conversation. You've heard different opinions of the planning commissioners come through that conversation as to our thoughts about different important things. So hopefully that will be helpful, not just to you, but to the staff and the city council as we go through this process. So, uh, that's where we are with this. Is there a motion? Is there readiness? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to defer, uh, with specificity, uh, for questions that Commissioner O'Brien asked, raise your hand. They were the motion carriers, uh, excuse me, opposed? And to oppose, okay. So it's a deferral from us, which is to say that come December, at our December meeting, we will have this meeting and, uh, hopefully some of the questions that were raised here tonight can be addressed. Uh, turning you to a traffic study as well as, uh, any kind of renderings, which would be beneficial. We do not get to defer more than one time, by the way. Just to make it clear to the applicant, and I understand your desire to move the same project forward is 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 one would. But I think if, um, just, just observation, and Attorney David and I have known each other for a little bit in terms of process. You know, don't be shy in asking any of us questions if you feel that's appropriate. We get questions from citizens all the time that we're glad to answer. Uh, we're not going to commit to our vote. But I don't think that we're legally restricted from, you know, giving philosophical kind of perspectives on things at any time that you feel is appropriate to ask us.
No, and I I appreciate all the comments and the diligence that everyone has put forth here. Uh, the traffic study is simple enough to do. Renderings might be a little more difficult.
Well.
I in terms of, it's a, it's a very significant structure and, you know, we have to get into a full blown design. And prob- the problematic issue is, is people don't want to spend a lot of money unless we know.
Right, right.
Where we're going.
You know, right.
And we can't determine the height of the different levels of the building at this juncture.
Yeah.
It's way too early.
Well, I I I think it's important to incorporate concepts that words capture. You tried to do that tonight. So for example, you've identified balconies. You also identified ensuring that the setbacks and variation is significant in order to prevent this from looking like a block, right? So there are a lot of things that I understand where you're coming from. You're not going to come up with, you know, renderings at this juncture that commit you to that and nothing else. But there are concepts, I think, that you can provide to us that while the renderings may change because of the process as a natural thing with, you know, the engineers and the architects and and more obviously, um, observation by the staff and city council. But I think you can give to us a better perspective on on this from from a side view. So for example, what does it look like from Ashford Dunwood? What does it look like from?
Sure, we can do, we can do perspectives.
And 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 importantly, to address some of the very legitimate concerns for the neighbors, you know, what does it look like from their side? Because I do know you're putting in screening. I do know you're going to be in landscaping associated with that. So how is that being ameliorated? And and by the way, that's the the issue with parking decks is nothing new to this project. More significantly, we address it with, for example, uh, All Saints Catholic Church. Remember that one? The parking deck that went up on the backyards of people's home. And that went through a very lengthy process that we, back in the day when we had the ability to defer more, we deferred that quite a few times until there was a consensus reached as to how that should look. But all I'm saying is that we are sensitive to parking decks because they come to us. For example, where, um, the new project where the, uh, hotel is going up, has a new parking deck next to the apartments there, and we had a lot of conversation and we basically, um, formed a subcommittee asking staff, what should our standards be for parking decks to make them look aesthetic? Because, you know, some parking decks are cool.
Right.
Some are not cool. And, you know, so we want the thing that is going to be there for the rest of our lives to be something that, understanding what it's for, to park cars, isn't so imposing as it otherwise could be. And we appreciate the fact that you're sensitive to that. So I think, um, Attorney David, if you want to, you know, contact any of us, you know, to get more clarification or suggestions for next time, please do. You've had, the staff will do likewise, of course. You work closely with them. But the idea that, you know, they're very too specific things that I think you can, you know, probably satisfy pretty readily with the, uh, traffic studies since I assume one's already been done before.
It has.
And I think principally the difference between aging in place and non aging in place you can put forward by experts who know that stuff better than any of us here. The rendering is, I think, just sufficient with the words to say, look, this is kind of what it's going to look like. Here's how we're going to mix it up. Here's where the plazas come into play and how people integrate, engage those so that the people who live there and will be using this place don't feel like they're boxed in.
Correct.
And 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 there, you've done some really clever stuff with some of the elevated plazas, by the way. I I could.
Oh, we appreciate that.
Well, in my opinion, that's just me speaking. Um, I'm only one of many. If my wife reminds me of. All right. I don't want to keep you anymore, but thank you very much for your.
Well, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. Again, your your diligence and the comments, and we certainly look forward to be back in here, back here next month.
December.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
But all the rest will get, uh, deferred as well. Do we have to vote on each of those to get deferred?
Yes.
Can we make that one motion? Okay, so we would need to defer each of the other slups. So, uh, as Seth has said, we can make that one motion for items number four, five, six, seven and eight, that they be deferred as well? If that's a proper motion that the commissioners want to make.
All right, I I've moved that we defer slups twenty dash oh two A through E, uh, uh, until the next meeting.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Second. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further conversation? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right, that's unanimous. All right, thank you again, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all of you for that conversation. We do have a couple items to go through. Do we have any other business before us, uh, from the folks on the screen? I I take that to know. Uh, we do have the ability for public comment. Uh, I don't know if there's anybody in the audience. Is there anybody online that, uh, is asking to have public comment?
If you would like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. We have commission comment. I'll start with Robert on your side.
I don't have anything to add.
The only thing that I would say is, um, one of the things that I've, that I was thinking as we were looking at this project is we have discussed heavily with other projects, um, green space, uh, on the site. We have heavily considered traffic impacts. And so for me, I want to thank Thomas, um, you know, thank you for that, motion to be able to get more information on it. And, um, and Bob, I want to thank you for, you know, helping clarify how we can look at things. I do want to be considerate personally for me of making sure I'm applying some sort of equitable, um, questioning and considerations as these projects come forward, in particular with traffic impact, which we know is a huge issue for our residents, um, and that area. And then also, as we do talk about, um, how the space looks, um, I I like the plaza, Bob, so one of the things, uh, so same for you. I thought it was fantastic, but, um, the renderings are important to me because it provides some sort of guarantee of this really is how we're looking at creating that active place space, if if you would.
I feel like by the job that we're doing here tonight, we're actually, though we're setting this project back to our next meeting, we're probably giving it the best chance to succeed in front of a council, uh, that may well be highly skeptical of the A word, apartments. But here, we're 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 gathering some facts, and we're hopefully going to give them something more meaningful than just stamping this through and saying, you know, it's a go. And in fact, to the to the potential benefit of the applicant, if the traffic study doesn't show any significant difference between the over and under fifty five crowd, we finally have a compelling argument on the record that perhaps we are not looking in the right direction with how to, you know, with regard to to how we're planning and growing. And perhaps it does require some rethinking. So I think we're making this project better and giving it a better chance to succeed, especially among folks that ultimately have to, uh, serve the populace of Dunwoody at large, seek election and and live with all these people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And, yeah, I'd like to, uh, first by say thanking the staff, uh, Richard and John, you guys always do a great job doing the presentation. So I appreciate all that. It helps bring everything together. And then also I thank my colleagues in, uh, the conversation, really good conversation. And Erica, thank you very much because I I felt there are the level of standards that I've kind of grown used to, like the traffic studies and drawings, to give me a really good idea of the perspective of what the community will look like in the in the area. So I appreciate that. Fifty five and over perspective, under, over, having that conversation, again, I appreciate just the conversation. So that, uh, learning and growing from what we're trying to do here and make it a better community. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm good. No comments. Thank you.
One final comment on two points. Um, if you get the Atlanta Business Chronicle, this is really interesting. How did they get where they got? You've heard me bring up the question of inclusionary zoning and how places ended up the way they are. This does a really good job in a few short words, and I'll send it to all of you, uh, describing it for them. Dunwoody is obviously different, but understanding that, I think, gives us some perspective. So when I raised the question about should we have inclusionary zoning in our code, there's reasons behind it. It's just not, you know, Bob thinking crazy again. Secondly, you will read in the, uh, current edition of the, uh, Dunwoody Reporter, an article where I invited the chairs and advice chairs of the planning commissions of the cities that surround us or basically perimeter, which would include Sandy Springs, Brookhaven, Chamberley, Doraville and Priest Street Corners, just to sit down and talk. So a few of us got together. Uh, Tom was going to make it on his way, but he got waylaid, um, which is okay. We're going to meet again, but I'm going to suggest that we include all the planning commissioners. This was just a test run to see if it would work. Why? There's nothing that we do in our city that doesn't affect our neighboring city. There's nothing that they do in their city that doesn't affect our city. And I can agree or disagree, but I think it's important that I understand and know. So that helps influence us in making better decisions collectively. Because let's face it, we are, we're we're going to be together for a long time to come at cities. And just sharing it from a planning commissioner perspective, I think is great. So the idea that we kind of concluded with is we'll have another meeting, you know, at the right time in a few months. Have it at another location. We had this one at McKendrick's in one of the other cities, perhaps where we kind of come together. You know, some of the neat restaurants that are around there, just to share and to learn and to realize that, um, there are a lot of great things that each of our cities do, and there was a lot that we can learn from each other, both in terms of policies and processes and outcomes. And 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 that's neat to me. It's it's just sharing from folks just like you who have the same questions that we all do, and and that's that's just fun. So I'm sharing that with you just to let you know when you read this, it wasn't to exclude, it was just a test. So I'm sharing that with you just to let you know when you read this, it wasn't to exclude, it was just a test to see if it would work. And the answer is, I think, yes. So expect something to come down the pike in the future.
That would be cool.
All right, is there anything else for the good of the order? With that, we stand adjourned. Thank all of you for being here tonight.